Members of the council, if I can please have you take your seats. Thank you. If we can please rise for the National Anthem. (Music) Please remain standing, and during this time, please remember the following persons who have passed away: Graham Gibson, Jean Patricia Malonovic, and David Lewis Stein. Thank you. You'll have to wait, okay? Members, before we start, just wanted to make a few comments about David Lewis Stein. As you know, he passed away recently. David Lewis Stein, I have known David for over thirty years when he covered the city of York. At that time, it was called Muddy York. And during those years, during the difficult times that I had during that period, David was very supportive of me, and over the years, we became very good friends. And I can tell you that on behalf of members of council, and all of us, he will be deeply missed. But at this time, I would like to acknowledge his family that's here, Christine and Benjamin Stein that's here in the audience, and his lifelong friends Marion Hibb, Erna Paris, Thomas Robinson, and Odo C. Benman. Thank you very much, and I know that David Lewis Stein would be in our hearts. And thank you for being here, and my condolences to you and the family and all the friends. Thank you. Counselor Matlow?
With the same spirit of remembering those we love. Counselor Cole and I recently had a coffee with Counselor Ann Johnson's daughter, Carrie. And she requested that, given the fact that we had a condolence motion last month, but there weren't any words spoken about her mom, that we might say just a brief comment about her significance to the city of Toronto and how she has affected our lives so positively. Ann Johnson, Counselor Ann Johnson passed away peacefully in June at the age of eighty-six. Ann Johnson, long before I was working on seniors issues in the city of Toronto, was known as Toronto Seniors Advocate. She did more than most anyone else to advance the cause of creating an age-friendly city, and we are better off for the work that she did. But it wasn't just seniors alone, it was anyone of any age she cared about to... You know, she was advocating for Vision Zero before that term was coined, trying to make our city a safe and accessible city for everyone of any age, whether you are a young parent pushing a straw, or senior with mobility issue, or a middle-aged person in a wheelchair. She advocated for tenants, she advocated for the city's most vulnerable. And when there was scandal, she helped lead the charge to have an inquiry over MFP, to bring accountability and openness to our democracy here at City Hall. She will be remembered as one of the great councillors, and I, on behalf of our community in North Toronto, just want to express my condolences and love to her family. And I know that we all share a great memory of Counselor Johnson with her voice and her strength here at council. And I also want to just, if I may, express my gratitude to former Mayor David Crombie, who at the service, I think, shared such wonderful memories and remarks about her legacy that I think all of us were very touched by. So again, on behalf of all of us, my condolences to her family.
Counselor Cole?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's quite difficult to speak to these amazing giants that we're talking about today. I knew them both, worked with both very well. And through very, very challenging times, like you did, Counselor. I just want to say about David Lewis Stein, you know, he was known as Scoop. You know, he loved City Hall, he loved the city of Toronto, he loved the people of Toronto. He gave his life really to the people of Toronto, and helped shape this city through his prodding, through his, you might say, teaching. You know, he used his column in the Toronto Star to teach people. And I was one of his students. And I would say he really left an impression on me in terms of what was our job here at the city and what its priorities were. And, you know, one of the things that I think David Lewis Stein deserves credit for that he really hasn't been acknowledged about enough is he helped create a green belt in Toronto and region of over a million hectares of land. It was he that inspired me to work on protecting the Oakridges Moraine. It was David that was there first, you know, in the Oakridges Moraine and the subsequent green belt. That's the kind of contribution David made to the city of Toronto and the greater Toronto area. And I hope going forward that there's some kind of recognition that is given, David, for his contribution to this, building the city, and also the legacy that he left for the city and the greater Toronto area. And so I just want to pass on my condolences to David, his family. And, you know, the thing about David, he always, no matter how difficult times were, he always had a bit of a smile, a chuckle, and always was very, very prodding, you might say. A heck of a mensch, David Lewis Stein, I just want to say in passing. And then Ann Johnson, like Counselor Matlow said, there's another one. I mean, she helped shape this city. And she did it, I served with her on Metro Council. And she, as Josh said, she really cared about advocating for people. Like she talked about accessibility before there was even a word, accessibility. And, you know, she pushed the TTC, pushed city agencies, the private sector, to making our city accessible for those that have accessibility challenges. So, and so Ann Johnson, another incredible city builder. And I have the Ann Johnson Health Station named after her in Ward Eight, the Coromore, Montgomery, and Young. And somebody even tried to change the name, and we're going to put a stop to that, Counselor Matlow and I. So anyways, two incredible city builders that deserve appreciation, and I pass on my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cole. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Onanishna Bay, the Chippewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat Peoples, and its new home, now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, the City Clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. I will now call for a motion to confirm the minutes. Counselor Crawford, you have a motion on the minutes from our last meeting.
Yes, the City Council confirmed the minutes of council from the regular meeting held on July sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, in the form supplied to the members.
All those in favor, carried. I will now call upon the committee chairs to introduce their reports. The chairs can speak about the reports for up to five minutes. Mayor Tor, you have a motion to introduce the Executive Committee report?
I do, Madam Speaker. I move that report from Meeting Eight of the Executive Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. And we had a number of important issues, but I think there was a common theme, Madam Speaker, to the issues that were discussed, which is working with other levels of government to make Toronto safer and fairer and more prosperous. And I think that was a theme that stretched across the agenda. We moved forward, I think, really importantly, and I think we can't emphasize how important this is, both within the context of making sure those investments are protected and enhanced in the aftermath of the federal election, but also trying to encourage the one remaining government, namely the provincial government, to come to the table with respect to addressing the state of good repair at Toronto Community Housing. I commented at the Executive Committee, and I comment here today, it has been well more than a decade that this City Council, in its previous incarnations, has been asking the other governments to form a partnership with us, as well they should, given that it is not possible for property taxpayers alone to finance the repairs that needed to be made, to make sure those buildings are habitable for some of our most vulnerable residents, but also to make sure that we protect public assets and stop what otherwise was going to happen. We know this, which was that units were going to be closed of Toronto Community Housing. And at a time when we have a shortage of affordable housing and a shortage of social housing, we could ill afford to have that happen. So that was dealt with, and it is here now for your consideration. It's the largest investment of its kind in the history of the city, and it will see us working together with the federal government and their funds to continue to invest in our buildings for the next nine years. We also dealt with an item that's my second key item today, namely the partnering with the provincial and federal governments to take one more step at the instigation of and based on the advice of the Chief of Police with respect to trying to deal with the terrible scourge of gun violence in our city. I was proud of the fact that, at my urging, the three governments came together to supply us with some funding we needed on an urgent basis. And I was talking to a member of council the other day about this, Madam Speaker, that at the time, what we couldn't say was, well, you know, we're having a meeting of the council on October second, and we'll think about what we're going to do between now and then, and we'll have a meeting and have a discussion. We had to take the lead, and I did so on your behalf, comfortable in the knowledge that when this came forward, and we always said it was going to have to come forward here for approval, that you would approve it. Because when I asked the question of the police chief, what do you need to help you deal with this? He gave me an answer, and I then proceeded to do the collection of those funds necessary to finance that in the best way I thought possible, which is a third, a third, and a third. And I'm very gratified at the fact that the federal and provincial governments came forward to help us with that challenge. And you've seen, Madam Speaker, the members of council have seen the results of that, which I don't attribute entirely to that investment of money, but I believe that the enhanced presence of police officers alone, I saw some people from Lawrence Heights talking on television about the fact they were comforted and reassured by the presence of additional police officers in their communities paid for by this initiative. You saw the police chief talk about the fact they had people that were out on bail, that were rearrested on gun charges, out on bail already on gun charges that they did rearrest during this initiative, thanks to the fact they had some extra resources and extra intelligence. And you saw the number of people who have been arrested and the number of guns that have been seized, and the reduction in shootings over the period immediately prior to the commencement of this community space initiative. And so I think that while you can't attribute all of the results that the chief talked about earlier this week to this initiative, I think it certainly helped, and I think he would acknowledge that. I think we are still in the same place we've always been, Madam Speaker, which is that we've got to pursue three strategies that are all tied together, but they all stand apart from one another. Support for the police, which this motion in front of you today will assist with in confirming. Secondly is changes to the laws, and I'll come back to that. And finally, investments in neighborhoods, kids, and families, which we're also going to end up dealing with today, thanks to a motion put forward by Councillors Nusziata and Carroll, and continuing effort on our part to identify ways in which the other governments can participate. I'm gratified, Madam Speaker, by the fact that at least two of the major parties have made multimillion-dollar commitments as part of their platforms, specifically dedicated to community investment in relation to gun violence and community safety issues. The thing I said I'd come back to in a biway of a closing comment is simply this. You know, we've talked a lot, and I won't belabor the point because it's on the record as to City Council's position on gun control, but I will say that a continuing, very significant frustration of the police who are working so hard out there to deal with incidents up to and including the last twenty-four hours is the disregard that seems to be shown for the overall voice of the community and for the issue of community safety when it comes to the bail laws. They tell me, the chief reported publicly, Madam Speaker, over and over again, they're encountering people who were charged with a gun offense, let out on bail, and then get charged with a gun offense again. And I think it is high time that we saw some response from the justice system and others to making sure, and the province has tried to be of some help with this, that that doesn't continue, because it's immensely frustrating for our neighbors. The police chief tells me it stops people from talking to the police because they know the people are going to be back in the neighborhood hours later. And I think it also just makes these people able to be out in the community posing a danger to public safety seemingly on a repeat basis. So we'll look forward to discussing all these matters, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Counselor Cressy, you have a motion to introduce the Board of Health report?
Thank you, Speaker. That the report from Meeting Nine of the Board of Health listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I'll just take another thirty seconds to make this chamber aware of one matter we dealt with, which isn't in front of us, but I just want you to be aware of it, that it's not here today. And that is our Board of Health's new comprehensive strategy to combat vaccine hesitancy. Our medical officer of health, as all health professionals have noted, that vaccines work. It's just that simple. They have saved more lives than any other healthcare intervention in history. And they've eliminated once deadly diseases. In recent years, we have seen a rise in vaccine hesitancy. In this city, certainly, twenty percent of parents identify as vaccine hesitant now, twenty percent. And we've seen in Canada, in the United States, and in particular in Europe, outbreaks. Outbreaks that have forced cities, and forced states, and forced countries to respond after the fact. And so we're not going to wait. In the city of Toronto, at Toronto Public Health, we have developed a comprehensive strategy to prevent an outbreak rather than wait for it. And that's what combating vaccine hesitancy is about. And you will see in this chamber and in this city in coming weeks and months a public education campaign, increased outreach and work with healthcare professionals, with school boards, with frontline nurses, because our work to prevent an outbreak starts before, not afterwards. And I suspect you'll see this conversation continue in our city in the days, weeks, and months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minnewong, you have a motion to introduce the Civic Appointments Committee report?
Yes, that the report for Meeting Nine of the Civic Appointments Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, you have a motion to introduce the Economic and Community Development Committee report?
Yes, Speaker, and thank you, and good morning. That the report for Meeting Seven of the Economic and Community Development Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I wanted to highlight, Speaker, just four specific items that were on the agenda. The first one is the EC seven point one, Toronto Fire Service Transformation Update Plan. I want to invite members to really take an opportunity to read this report. It is extremely important because it really speaks to what Toronto Fire is seeking to do with respect to their transformation plan. I also want to, at this time, Speaker, congratulate Toronto Fire Service on achieving an international accreditation. It's the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. It's an accreditation under the Centre for Public Safety Excellence. And in fact, it makes Toronto the largest city in North America to receive this accreditation. And I think this goes, credit goes to the fire chief, Matt Pegg, and Deputy Chief Jessup. We have two of the most outstanding individuals in the fire service fraternity who are responsible for the city's fire service, and I think that's extremely important for us. The other item I wanted to highlight, Speaker, is EC seven point seven. That's the mayor's Los Angeles mission. I accompanied the mayor along with Counselor Fletcher, who is the Chair of the Film Board, along with some thirty-plus business leaders from the screen sector. It's really important in terms of the recognition, in terms of what we're actually doing in the city, responding to the needs that has been made clear to us that we need to address in the city around infrastructure in terms of how we grow and develop this sector. Sector produces some two-plus billion dollars for us. We need to ensure that it continues to grow, also in terms of what we're doing with workforce development and also customer service in this sector. this sector. I also want to point out, Speaker, that this industry is growing not just in the downtown core, it's also expanding as well to the outlining areas. In fact, even in my ward, we are going to see three new studios develop. The work is actually on the way. Folks from Pinewood, who built Pinewood, have come into the community. We're going to see an additional six to, 600 to 1,000 new jobs in our community, and these are well-paying jobs. And I think this is something that we need to be very proud of, because it's extremely important. The other item that I'd like to highlight, Speaker, is a contribution that has been made to our city, and this is EC 7.3. It's a contribution, a donation, that's been made by a Toronto resident, a former staffer, Chris Berlinger, in the amount of $250,000. This is the first time that any staff member has made such a great contribution. And I think it's something that we should, appreciate coming, yes. And I think it's something that we really should, should really appreciate from Mr. Berlinger. As you know, he spent over 30 years here. He left as head of Social Development and Finance. He has been a champion with respect to helping communities and so on, and I think that's extremely important with respect to our acknowledgement. And finally, Speaker, I wanted to draw members' attention to EC 7.10. It's the implementation of the coroner's recommendation from the Faulkner and Chapman inquests. I really want to ensure that members read this report. It's extremely important. The recommendations that are contained in there is specifically important for the city, in terms of what we do and how we can play a role. The report calls for more facilities to actually help those who are vulnerable citizens. Additionally, we are stepping up, we are looking at, as part of the budget process, to provide eight new additional street outreach workers, who actually will create, obviously, a more welcoming opportunity and environment for those who are vulnerable citizens on our street. But again, I want to reiterate, I would ask members to really read this report, because oftentimes there are conflicts with respect to where we put some of our facilities, and in terms of how we, as members or council, respond to that. In many instances, we actually don't respond in a way that allows for collaboration. We sort of say, "We don't want these facilities in place", but we actually have to do a better job to ensure that we protect our citizens. Thank you.
Councillor Ainsley, you have a motion to introduce the General Government and Licensing Committee report?
Morning, Madam Speaker, that the report from meeting number seven of the General Government Licensing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the Infrastructure and Environment Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, that the report from meeting seven of the Infrastructure and Environment Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I would simply bring attention to two items on the agenda. One is IE 7.8, Toronto Diversity Strategy, and then it was IE 7.13, e-scooter regulations. I urge all councillors to take a look at those items, and hopefully they'll be helpful for debate.
Thank you. Councillor Bilal, you have a motion to introduce the Planning and Housing Committee report?
I do, Madam Chair, good morning, that the report from meeting eight of the Planning and Housing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. And I just want to highlight two items, one that is in front of us and one that was discussed at committee but is not in front of us. The first one is obviously the approval of the projects that are under the Open Door Program for this year, that translate in about 651 new affordable rental homes. And, you know, this is the third year that we're doing the program, and as we learn every time, we fine-tune it more and more. And there was real emphasis this year in making sure that we are approving shovel-ready projects. We put a lot of emphasis on that, that the periods of affordability are as long as we possibly can. So I think it's great that we have quite a few of these projects that are affordable for 99 years. And obviously, we know that our nonprofit sector is really important in here, and so we've created a fund to help them fine-tune some of the applications that were not ready to be approved this year. So there's a $250,000 fund that was created to continue to work with these nonprofits, so that we actually see these projects come to fruition. And since we're talking about nonprofits, I do want to thank Mayor Tory for actually proclaiming today Nonprofit Recognition Day, and actually thank all the nonprofits in our city today. And we all know that housing is a sector that we definitely work closely with the nonprofits, but many, many other fields in the city that we do a lot of work, and they're great partners to deliver many services, and in particularly, a livable city. So I want to thank them for all they do. The other point that I wanted to bring out, that is not in front of us, but our chief planner gave us a great presentation, we had the opportunity to discuss with him quite a bit, is the end-to-end review that is happening with the planning department. So this was, this is work that planning is undertaking, to have more of a project management approach, to delineate clearly how the project and the applications come through the system, but also to innovate with technology. We will need new technology to assist our great teams that we have in there, and to have some accountability brought to the system. So it's a lot of hard work, heavy lifting, that the department is doing, and so I just want to thank them. Once again, I think that everybody at the committee thanked them for the work that they're doing, that we're all here, looking forward to getting to the finish line, knowing that this is very much a process that is ongoing. But we do want to thank planning and the team for putting this forward, and their continued work in improving the system. So that was it.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes, you have a motion to introduce the Tobago York Community Council report?
Good morning, and good morning, Madam Speaker, that the report from meeting eight of the Tobago York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the North York Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, that the report from meeting eight of the North York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Karjannis, you have a motion to introduce the Scarborough Community Council report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that the report from meeting eight of the Scarborough Community Council listed on the agenda be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Perks, you have a motion to introduce the Toronto and East York Community Council report?
Good morning, Speaker. I move that the report from meeting eight of the Toronto and East York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Ford, you have a motion to introduce the new business and business previously requested from city officials?
I do, Madam Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. Not new business, and business previously requested from city officials listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motions? Are there any declarations of interest? Please indicate the committee, the item or motion number, and the nature of the interest, and remember that you must also file a written declaration of your interest with the city clerk. No? I will now call for petitions. Are there any petitions at this time? Members, I will now review the order paper. The mayor has designated item MM 10.3, headed declaring a climate emergency and accelerating Toronto's Climate Action Plan as this first key matter for this meeting. This will be the first item of business today. I will deal with the procedural requirements to bring the motion forward when we get to the item. The mayor's second key item is item EX 8.20, headed additional funding to support Toronto Police Services, immediate response to increased levels of gun violence, and to keep communities safe. This will be the second item of business today. Members, there are two items on the agenda, item EX 8.26, headed investing in community-based anti-violence programs, and members' motion MM 10.2, headed addressing the root causes of violence, Toronto Ward's peace, that I propose be considered with the mayor's second key item, EX 8.20. Mayor Tory, do you consent to the joining of these two items with your second key matter?
I do, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a point of order or a point of privilege, but earlier yesterday, we were talking about moving my motion to it so that there would be no confusion about the three items?
So...
The motion that you seconded?
Yes, right.
So is it two items together, the supplementary report in this, or the three items?
We're dealing with the members' motion with the mayor's second key item, EX 8.20.
So it's two items, because the other one is a supplementary?
And EX 8.26, so there's three items.
Oh, okay. It was just, it was not clear from the way it's written on the green sheets. Thank you. Okay.
Notices and motions are scheduled to be dealt with at 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, only if the mayor's key matters are completed. I propose that city council set a time for a closed session if required later in the meeting. City clerk has noted the items that members wish to hold. I will now go through the items listed on the order paper to take additional holds. I will recognize request to make matters urgent and time-specific after I go through the items for additional holds. Once the order paper has been approved by council, any change will need a two-thirds vote.
Madam Speaker, my mic's still on?
Page three. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I'd like to hold EX 8.9, Helping Residents Impacted by the Elimination of Transitioned Childcare Benefits.
Thank you. Councillor Perks?
Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to hold EX 8.6, Fostering Diversity in the Toronto Public Service.
Thank you. Councillor Wong-Tam?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I'd like to hold item EX 8.7, Creating a Gender Equity Strategy and Gender Equality Office for Toronto. Thank you.
Thank you. Page four. Councillor Karjannis?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to release EX 8.18, Solid Waste Management Services 2019 Budget Capital and 2020 to 2028 Capital Plan Adjustment, and also EX 8.19, Transportation Services 2019 Capital Budget and 2020-2028 Capital Plan Adjustment.
Thank you. Okay, so on EX 8.18, on favor, carried. 8.19, on favor, carried. Thank you. Councillor Cole?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to hold EX 8.26.
It's already part of the key.
Oh, it's been folded in?
It's going to, it's, we're dealing with the three items together.
Okay.
Councillor Wong-Tam?
EX 8.22, Proposed Budget Process Changes to Remove Systemic Barriers to Hiring People with Disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perks, page five.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to hold EC 7.10, Implementation of Coroners' Recommendations from the Faulkner and Chapman Inquests.
Thank you. Councillor McElvee?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move 9.3 with a recorded vote, and then just speak very
Okay, so you're holding CA 9.3?
Yep.
Councillor, okay, Councillor Perks, you've already, your name's up. So councillor Fletcher on page five?
Thank you, Speaker. EC 7.2, Non-Competitive Agreement with Zoll Medical Canada for the Purchase of Defibrillators for Toronto Fire Services Operational Apparatus. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to hold GL 7.15, Update on the City of Toronto Municipal Code, Chapter 545, Licensing of Payday Loan Establishments.
Thank you. Councillor Wong-Tam?
I've removed my name, councillor.
Okay. You're going so fast. Can I say it?
Yes.
Thank you. It's infrastructure, it's IE 7.7, Non-Competitive Contract with Lands and Forests Consulting for Prescribed Burn Services. Okay, so councillor McElvee, you were on the previous one, right? Or did you just put your name back up? Pardon?
I'd like to hold items IE 7.8. Oh, sorry, sorry to help, nevermind.
Okay. Okay, let's go to page seven. Councillor Ainsley?
Madam Speaker, IE 7.13, it is held by councillor Pasternak. There is reference in the report that staff made a submission to the province. Would it be possible to have that submission circulated to us with this item as heard?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cole?
Yes, I would like to hold PH 8.4, Toronto Municipal Code, Chapter 363, Construction and Demolition Bylaw Update.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ford?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On page eight, UY 8.14, Metrolinks, Finch West, LRT Utility Relocation. I do have a minor amendment prepared by staff that I could release at this time.
Sure. Is it, the staff has it?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so if we can put it on the screen, the amendment?
And it's just the underlying portion.
The undi, the undi line? Is everyone okay?
Yeah.
Just the underlying portion?
I understand. Do you mean what's... You're just adding times, right? Yeah, the "and" was wrong.
Right, "and" and "they" are going overnight.
It's adding it right.
Yeah, they're adding overnight.
Well, you're adding it whole different ways. Yeah, we got to read that.
I can hold it. I'm happy to hold it, members of council have any questions.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So if we can have that circulated. Deputy Mayor Minawang, on page eight.
Yes, North York Community Council, 8.3, Final Report, 1299 Donwell's Road. I'd like to hold that.
Thank you. Page nine. Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to have a recorded vote on NY 8.35, Application to Remove a Private Tree, 45 Addison Crescent. Thank you.
Okay, so on page nine, NY 8.35, councillor Holliday is asking for a recorded vote.
The item is adopted, 21 to 3.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, you're on page nine.
I am, Speaker.
Okay.
Speaker, I'd like to request as well, a recorded vote on SC 8.2, 1560 Birmley Road and 1350 Elsmere Road. It's the official plan amendment, zoning amendment. It's the official plan amendments, zoning amendments, final report.
Okay. So Counselor Thompson is asking for a recorded vote, recorded vote, on an SC 8.2. Counselor Ly?
Counselor Perutz, that your vote, please.
Counselor Kergianis, when you're seated, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, 25 in favor.
Counselor Holliday, page 11.
Yep, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like to have recorded votes on TE 8.50, Traffic Control Signals, Bay Street and St. Mary's Street, and on TE 8.63, Pedestrian, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bradford's held that. So just a recorded vote on TE 8.50.
Okay, Counselor Holliday is asking for a recorded vote, TE 8.50, recorded vote. Counselor Matlow, please.
The item is adopted, 22 to 3.
Counselor Wong-Tam, page 11.
Yes, Madam Speaker, you went through page 10 rather quickly, and I wanted to hold an item. It's TE 8.11, 56 Young Street, 21 Melinda Street, 1830 Wellington Street West, 187 to 189 Bay Street, and 25 King Street West. If I could hold that item, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 12. Counselor Wong-Tam?
Madam Speaker, the next item was actually on page 11, and it's an accompanying item to what we just held down, and so that would be TE 8.70 on page 11, Alterations to Designated Heritage Property and Authority to Enter into Heritage Easement Agreement, 199 Bay Street, 25 King Street West, and 56 Young Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 13. Counselor Matlow?
Page 13, CC 10.7206 Russellville Road, I can release that.
Okay, on page 13, CC 10.7, Counselor Matlow's releasing, on favor, carried. Counselor Wong-Tam?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On page 13, I need to hold two items, that's CC 10.8, 203 Garvis Street, Zoning Bylaw Amendment and Application, Request for Directions, as well as the item following, is CC 10.9, 10 to 16 Wellesley Street West, 5 to 7 St. Nicholas Street, and 586 Young Street, Request for Directions.
I will now consider request to make items urgent and time specific. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker, I'd like to have EX 8.9, Helping Residents Impacted by the Elimination of Transition Child Benefit. I'd like to have that item be dealt with tomorrow after the members' motion.
Yes, 8.9. On favor, carried. Counselor Fletcher?
Yes, Speaker, it's TE 8.12, TE 8.13. I'm just gonna ask that those be dealt with at 2:00 today, this is time sensitive, and there's a little confusion that I'm working with the chief planner and the mayor to get that sorted out so that can pass today, so.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's fine, Counselor Fletcher, as long as the Mayor's item has been complete.
Okay.
What, which one was that on?
TE 8.12 and 1...
First item after the Mayor's key item.
Key items?
Yeah.
If they're gonna be done, this has to be done today?
Yes.
So, assuming we're done them all today, but I'll leave that up to the mayor, because he's involved.
Thank you. On favor, carried. Counselor Wong-Tam?
Yes, Madam Speaker. On page seven, PH 8.1, Review of Electrical Systems at Toronto Community Housing, Update and Maintenance and Upgrade Processes for Electrical Systems. The item is held by Counselor Fletcher, but I would, I'm hoping that we can invite staff from TCHC, Electrical Safety Authority, as well as Toronto Fire to be in the council chambers to ask questions. So if I can request that we time that item first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. First item tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
On favor, carried. Counselor Carroll?
Madam Speaker, I don't have a time-sensitive item, but as we haven't adopted the Order Paper yet, I was wondering if I could hold an item?
Which one?
It's on top of page eight, EY 8.1.
Yes?
Thanks, I just want to finish reading it, thank you.
Counselor Matlow? I was just clarifying the item number. Okay, yeah, the seizing of, okay, thank you. May I just, may I just, thank you. So this is a motion to remove Item PH 8.5, Headed Feasibility of Implementing a Support Centre for Committee of Adjustment and Toronto Local Appeal Body Matters, from the Planning and Housing Committee, and bring that in forward to council for consideration, and then, and then asking for, for a deferral of it. And the reason for this is not to suggest in any way, the committee, by the way, did their job and did it well, and I recognize that staff, I think, very thoughtfully reviewed the item and came to, I think, a reasonable conclusion that if, if we are trying to replicate something that the province had, it wouldn't be perhaps as helpful as we would have hoped or cost-effective. So I recognize their, their conclusion. However, the discussion that I had with the staff led me to the conclusion that, that what perhaps Counselor Wong-Tam, when she first moved this, and I would like to see created, is actually vastly different from what they had reviewed and then considered and then concluded, meaning that in no way are we suggesting that we should be copying or replicating what the province did. In no way would I want to spend that kind of money or have that kind of, you know, bureaucratic model set up. But we do want to see, if possible, a thoughtful consideration of some frontline advice to residents to try to avoid what we end up doing, which is spending tens of thousands of dollars, many council meetings, on outside support to provide support to our city and by that way residents, for sometimes cases on merit, sometimes because they're asking us to champion them, and we don't really know if an outside consultant, even if hired, will really be practically helpful. That happens sometimes, I think we all recognize that. The other thing is, there's a lot of confusion out there. I think all of us have heard from residents that they don't understand sometimes whether or not our legal staff is there for the city or for them, and they often sort of go to those lawyers, thinking that they're gonna be receiving advice from them, but really the lawyer is there to advise council, and there's a lot of confusion. What we're hoping for is that if there's some way to avert the time, the staff time that our lawyers have to spend advising residents, that they're not there to advise them, that we can avoid perhaps hiring as many outside consultants in the future, then it will be worth it to have a, you know, whether it be one or two people or something at the front of, yeah, I'm making a speech to, to seize it. To, to avoid, I think, a lengthy and costly process that often leads to confusion afterwards. So the point of seizing this from committee and then deferring this for a cycle is in no way to suggest again that the report is wrong, it's, it's a well-thought-out report, and the committee did their job as well, considering the advice that they received. It's just a nuanced submission to you all that what we're asking for is different than what was considered by either staff or by the committee, and that we'd like an opportunity to see if it's possible to do something that actually will help, help the public, help our legal staff, help our planners, help members of council dealing with residents who need that kind of support, and ultimately help residents themselves, and potentially save a lot of money in the long run. So we would need two-thirds to be able to do this, and I ask you for your support, but again, this is just no, it's kind of, it's, it's not about what was written, it's about what wasn't written, and why we need some more advice over the next cycle to come back with hopefully something better. And ultimately, I'll just conclude by saying, if, if, if they don't come back with a different approach to it, then there's no harm done, then we just follow the committee's recommendations a month from now, but I'd really appreciate an opportunity to see if there's a different way of doing business to be able to, to address the, the issues that I just raised with you all. Thank you very much.
Counselor, oh, Counselor Perks, did you want to speak?
I have a question of the mover.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Question to the mover?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I was on the committee, read the report, listened to the debate, and I'm trying to get clear in my head what you're doing. So staff were asked by motion of Counselor Wong-Tam to look at a variety of mechanisms to provide support for people who are at the Committee of Adjustment and then go on to the LPAP. That's what the basic thrust of all this is. The staff report focused on this notion of creating a centre, which is modeled on the provincial centre for the OMB. Is that right so far?
Yeah.
And your intention here is to go and say, okay, we understand that a centre like they have at the OMB is expensive and doesn't necessarily meet the need, so your intention here is to look to see if there are any other mechanisms available. Am I understanding you correctly?
Oh, sorry.
No, you encapsulated that very well, Counselor Perks, and if I may add, the resource centre that the province had, very briefly, admittedly, is what they reviewed and principally, in discussions directly with the staff who authored the report, that was really the model that they reviewed, and then they essentially came to the conclusion that that's just, it's not worth doing here. What, what we're looking for is a far less costly, far less bureaucratic type of model that could at least be sort of a frontline advice place to go to, so that perhaps we could avoid the lengthy, confusing, and costly process that often ensues when residents just assume that, you know, that, that everyone gets a lawyer, everyone gets a planner, and that our legal staff work for that residents' association. One other thing, if I may add, Fontra has said that they, they have not been consulted on this, and this would also give an opportunity for residents and residents' association to be consulted.
And just if I can understand procedurally, the way, the reason you're doing it like this, instead of just going to committee with a new item?
Yeah.
Is that if you attempted to go to committee with a new item, we would be told, oh, no, council's decided on that within the last year?
That's correct.
So this is the only way to get that further investigation, given the initial motion that Counselor Wong-Tam made was quite broad?
That is correct, and as I said earlier, I have absolute respect for the committee chair and the members. Their work was, they did their work exactly the way they should be doing it. This is not a reflection on that, it's just a matter of this is based on the clerk's advice, the only way at this point to recognize that what the staff reported on and what the committee considered wasn't exactly what we are hoping to achieve, and this is just one cycle to see if that can be done.
Thank you. So Counselor Bylaw, you want to speak on this?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I just appreciate the, the work that Counselor Matlow wants to do, and I'm looking forward to doing the work with him. I just think what he's looking for and what he's said is something very different from what we have approached and discussed, and I would suggest that we initiate that work, and so if he wants to put a motion at committee or put a members' motion here with giving us a little bit more direction on what he's looking for, because I don't want to end up in the same location where we are, so I think that the council would need to give us a little bit more direction on what he's looking for, and I'm willing to, to, to work towards that, so to make sure that we are answering to the questions that he wants, and to create the ideal support system that he, he wants. So I would like to see, instead of going this route, I, I would like to see, and I would work with the councillor, to have either a motion working through the committee or a motion with more details working directly to council, however the councillor would wish. I just wished we had the opportunity to discuss this before, but I think we need to give a little bit more direction than just defer and then coming back, and giving that direction, everybody in here will understand what they're voting for and what the councillor has in mind, so that is my comments on this item.
Thank you. Counselor Cole, you want to speak on this, on that?
Thank you, and I, I support what Counselor Mas, Moscow, Counselor Matlow's trying to do, because it really is a necessary undertaking here to give this more thought and deliberation, because, for example, in my Board Eight, I have about 15...
Okay, Counsel, sorry, I'm gonna have to stop all this. What we're debating is that Counselor Matlow's moved a motion to take an item out of planning and growth and bring it forward at the, we're not gonna discuss details, your ward, anybody else's ward, this is what we're debating right now, so let's just vote on it, and if it passes, then we can debate it. Okay?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to do is to say that what Counselor Matlow is asking to do is something I support, and you allowed Counselor Bylaw to speak, and I think I have the same right to speak.
Yes, but we, we're just debating on the item being taken out of...
Okay, forget it then, forget it.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 8 to 17.
Counselor Fletcher?
I neglected to mention something when I asked to have that time specific, and that is that if this can be sorted out, then there's no need to actually do that, I would be able to release it, so I'm just advising you of that as well, but that's just in there for insurance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adopting the, the Order Paper and all items not held, recorded
The motion carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Members of council, I want to stress the importance of preparing your motions in advance. The clerk's staff are here to help you prepare your motions. In particular, if you intend to move a motion during the release of hold, I will insist that your motion be prepared in advance and given to the clerk. If you do not have your motion ready, I will not recognize you, and I'm also reminding members that you must state your motion first before you speak to it. Members, City Council follows a routine for the processing and adding of any motions without notice during the meeting. Please remember that a motion without notice must include a reason for urgency... Please remember that a motion without notice must include a reason for urgency. If you have an urgent motion without notice you wish to bring forward at this meeting, please give your motion to the city clerk's staff. They will prepare the necessary procedure motion for my review along with your motion. The chair must agree the motion is urgent before you can speak leave to introduce it at this meeting. It will require eighteen votes to add a motion without notice to the agenda during the meeting. Motions added to the agenda in this way are not subject to a vote to waive referral to a committee or agency. I will be reviewing all motions carefully, and I will advise council after each recess which motion, need a motion to add to the agenda. We will now go to the mayor's key item, which is MM ten point three, headed climate, declaring a climate emergency. Yeah, so, on the motion to waive referral, on favor, carry. So, it's now before us. Mayor Torrey. Yeah, do we have any questions to staff? We're dealing with members' motion MM ten point three, the mayor's key item.
Oh, questions to staff?
Yes, do we have questions to staff? Counselor Carroll.
Yes, ma'am, speaker. I just want to make clear, the members' motion asks us to make an expenditure that's, or to take a stance that's outside of the overarching strategy. So, the question is, is it in keeping with the strategy?
Through the chair, I think that what this does is it advances the strategy at a greater rate and to a much deeper level. I think directionally, it's consistent with what we've already got, it's just a much more aggressive target.
So, it takes us to a much deeper level within the strategy that council's already adopted, and so, we might see deeper and more enhanced recommendations, but they'll still be coming forward at the time we mapped out already. Am I seeing that correctly?
I think in advance of, I think the current strategy, the Transform TO strategy is an eighty percent reduction by 2050, and one of the asks in this motion is to see if we can't do it by 2040.
So, in the next reporting time, you'll tell us, here was your original strategy and your original goal, given the emergency, given recent data, here are some enhancements, and we could stay on the same course but in fact enhance it and get better results.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Different, more aggressive results, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Those are my questions, ma'am speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher, questions to staff?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, it might be the CFO and it might be Mr. Baxter, what's the current budget that we have for Transform TO?
I don't have that number in front of me right now.
Through the chair, we will get that number for you. I don't have it in front of me.
And you had a chance to look at this and determine the increased spending that we may have to commit to in order to achieve the targets that we set?
Through the speaker, actually, the targets that have been set will be revisited through the 2020 budget process, so those haven't been assessed for this particular motion.
Or just looked at the fact that we need to be more aggressive? You would agree that we're going to have to increase our pressure on, we're going to have to spend some money to get where we want to get to?
So, through the speaker, we will have to spend, but I think we're looking for creative solutions where we're looking to partner with the private sector to expedite and scale the ability for us to respond to this request.
Can you give me an example?
Yeah, I can give you an example of that. We have a joint development agreement with EnWave to work on the creation of low-carbon thermal energy systems. That's the first.
Are there any thoughts, I'm just gonna ask, are there any thoughts here of creating a great corporation like EnWave that we had created at the city? Are there any initiatives there that we may need to think of and fund?
Through the chair, what we're doing is looking for creative solutions. We're not ruling anything out, but we absolutely will be looking to partner with the private sector to ensure that we can actually respond to the scalability that's required to accelerate the targets.
And I'm asking if we're also contemplating, that wasn't the private sector in the past, that's an initiative that came from Metro Council, actually. So, some of the deeper initiatives that we need to grab, are we prepared to do that, in your opinion, financially?
I think, again, we have to refer back to the 2020 budget process and evaluate the different priorities that we're juggling.
So, I guess as pure priority budget-wise, how are you putting a climate emergency, then, your lens for that?
At this point, as you know where we are in the budget cycle, we're assessing what priorities we actually can afford.
So, this will be very helpful to you, to know that council may make this a large priority.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, questions to staff?
Thank you very much, speaker. Speaker, I had questions that will require the General Manager of Economic Development to answer some. I don't see that person here, so I wonder if I can just stand my questioning down and perhaps we can reach out to him to have him come in, then I would ask my questions at that point.
Okay, so if somebody could call. Thank you. Okay, can we call? Counselor Pasternak.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff, how reliant are we on other levels of government to come to the table for bilateral agreements to make this happen?
The participation of other levels of government is going to be essential to the City of Toronto in achieving our Transform TO targets. I think, you know, when we did our Transform TO research as part of our 2017 submission, it was clear that other levels of government are not only important, but they're vital, not only in their dollars, but in their leadership. And I think both of those elements are essential. Now, having said that, the City of Toronto is consistent with other cities around the world in taking the lead. The lead on climate change is being done at the municipal level, and we're the ones that are going to set targets and the game plan, but other levels of government are important to what we do.
And on top of that, I've got, I guess this is, this is an update you've given to councillors, the Transform TO Climate Action for a Healthy, Equitable, and Prosperous Toronto.
That's the status update for the first two years of Transform TO implementation, yeah.
So, this references also international climate agreements, and obviously that would go through the federal government. How dependent are we on those agreements to make things happen?
Again, that's a leadership point, right? The federal government signed on to the Paris Accord, and we've made those commitments part of our design in both Transform TO to this point, but in going forward. So, yeah, they help us set targets, they help us set priorities, and they gave us access to the global community, of which we're a leader.
So, we touched on the budgetary issues a minute ago. Is there a formula that these international agreements are binding municipalities to spend one percent of our gross operating on climate change, two percent? Is there some kind of formula or benchmark we can work with?
Not at this point.
No? Infrastructure Environment Committee is anxiously awaiting discussion of the City of Toronto Resiliency Report. I know it's been, it was released with much fanfare. Maybe this is for the city manager, I'm just wondering, and we had to move a motion here at committee to get staff to bring it to committee, I'm just wondering when it will become to committee, it's a pretty important part of this discussion.
So, through the speaker, subject to discussion with senior leadership here, I mean, we're gonna obviously try to move it as quick as possible. I would hope by November, we would have something we'd be able to put in front of you.
And referenced earlier, we're public-private partnerships, is that run out of our partnership office or more run out of economic development when we bring the private sector on board when it comes to actions on climate change?
The one JDA that we have in place right now with EnWave, that was led by the Environment and Energy Division, but with consultation with ECTAV, LEGO, and other internal partners.
And are we finding positive response from the private sector? Are they?
Absolutely.
Are they buying into it as a good economic opportunity?
Yes, they are. The agreement allows EnWave and others to develop these low-carbon communities on their own, whether, you know, with or without the participation of the city. And we're seeing EnWave taking the lead and taking the initiative on some developments. The Well, for example, is a low-carbon development that's been developed by EnWave. Creative Energy out of Vancouver is working on a low-carbon solution for the Honest Ed property at Bathurst and Bluer. So, yeah, we're seeing that happening now. We're getting much smarter energy decisions now that energy developers are part of the equation and not just the real estate developers.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much, speaker. Through you to the General Manager of Economic Development. Mr. Williams, the migration with respect to the economic, I guess, benefit as part of this particular process, looking at carbon and carbon-based activities and so on, what is the current relationship in terms of the big picture when we look at this issue around the environment and climate change? What are we doing to simultaneously work in conjunction to ensure that jobs that would be lost in terms of areas where fossil fuels and others, and opportunity with respect to green jobs and green tech opportunities, what are we doing in terms of that sector? Because I would imagine that this has to go hand in hand. Would you agree?
Totally. I think Toronto's in a great position to leverage this as an opportunity, since our job loss is probably going to be less than some other jurisdictions, but our job opportunities in terms of installation, in terms of construction, in terms of even the software, et cetera, needed to do a better job of managing energy and managing a lot of the sustainability issues and on resiliency is a great opportunity for the City of Toronto.
So, the leadership that Mr. Baxter's been talking about and the mayor's been talking about, it's one that will coincide with respect of a variety of different areas and/or sectors with respect to our society as a whole, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, in the areas of helping to retool and helping those who are working in industries now that are impacting the environment in a negative way, what is the game plan in terms of correlation between institutions such as universities and colleges, training and so on, even labor? What is our role and are we providing a complementary leadership in this sector?
We're doing some, we're probably not doing enough. For instance, Toronto Atmospheric Fund has a series of programs that help companies readjust. Many other orders of government also do the same thing. We work with the universities and colleges with regard to identifying training opportunities, working with TESS to do that, but if you're asking, is there a cohesive exhaust plan in place, no.
How can we formulate that? Will that be the leadership with respect to the mayor as part of this particular process that's actually in place? And will we have a corresponding game plan from EDC?
Yes.
To correlate with this? Because I think it's important for us to provide at least a level of understanding to the broader community at large, that it isn't this versus that, and that the expense in terms of how people view this about job loss in one sector can be realized in other sectors, so it's not a situation that we're going to displace workers or such. So, we're preparing to help them, is that correct?
Correct. There's plenty of opportunity to adjust within the labor force and also take advantage from an investment perspective for job creation.
Thank you. Just a quick question for the mayor, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, you've heard the General Manager of Economic Development has spoken about the economic relationship with respect to this game plan in terms of affecting climate change that is a serious matter, and we all know it's very disruptive, but we really need that plan to help us in terms of coordinating a number of industries plus institutions and so on. Could you advise us as to how you are approaching that particular opportunity in collaboration with the matter that's in front of us here today?
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the best example I can offer is where we started, and it's a start and it's a single initiative, but I hope we can repeat it in a number of different contexts with what we've called the Green Will Initiative as it relates to the single largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the city, which is buildings. And at my invitation, a number of the leading developers, landowner, commercial landowners, office space landowners, together with, and this is the important part, hospitals, universities, school boards, plural, both the Catholic and public school boards, and the City of Toronto, so far, three hundred million square feet. And just to put that into context, three hundred million square feet covered across the city in this initiative so far, there's seventy-five million square feet, for example, of office space in downtown Toronto, so it gives you a measure of how much space, building space, is covered so far by this initiative. But I think it's very much going to be a public-private partnership in that I'm hopeful the public sector will benefit from some of the ideas where the private sector's been doing this for a number of years, perhaps in their own economic self-interest, perhaps because they wanted to help stop the degradation of the environment, and that we can learn from what they've done, but they in turn can benefit from our ability to help them with some of the programs, for example, that the federal government does have and will have going forward. So, it's one example of the kind of collaboration in the absence of legislative tools that we don't have here that other cities and other countries may have, that we can move forward on this agenda and start in a cooperative way by addressing the single biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions. So, that's, I think, a very good example and one that we're proceeding with.
Thank you. Counselor Layton to speak?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. More, faster. That's what the youth of the world are asking of us. More, faster. They see a world that is growing hotter, and they see governments that are not acting fast enough. When I think about this issue, I think about something very easy for me, my kids. We're told by our indigenous brothers and sisters to look seven generations, backwards and forwards. The problem is, I'm finding it more and more difficult to think past two. To think past the life that my kids and grandkids will have. To think about the food that will either be too contaminated to eat or won't be in enough abundance. To think about the animals and the plants that they won't get to experience, that just two generations ago, our grandparents had in such abundance. To think about the countries that will go extinct and wash away into the ocean. To think about the cities that will no longer exist all around the world because of climate change. To think about all the kids that won't survive the changing climate around the world. This has grown beyond a simple inconvenience. For us, it's about basement flooding now and the cost and inconvenience of addressing that. But if we don't do more, faster, this is gonna go beyond mere inconvenience to a catastrophe all around the world. Now, Toronto has good plans. We've got these great plans, but we're not meeting the urgency of the global crisis. These are well documented and outlined by the IPCC report after report. Not a week goes by, we don't get another warning. And yet, governments fail to take the action necessary. This statement is a promise. It says, we will do more, faster. Now, it's vague on the specifics, but that's because we have these plans and we have processes of funding. of funding city plans. And we need to make sure that the promise we make today carries forward to fulfilling this promise when later this year, when we'll vote on a budget, later, early next year, later this term, when we'll vote on an accelerated Transform TO plan, and maybe even later this meeting, when we talk about our investment policy around sustainable investment. More, faster. This outlines better targets. It outlines an accelerated timeframe and is more inclusive of those most impacted by climate change, of labor, and of youth. Now, the words that were written in this motion, they aren't the mayor's. They aren't the mayor's. They're not mine. They're the Toronto experts, activists, and, most importantly, those youth that are rising up as part of this global movement. We need to thank them for drawing attention to us and pushing us to action. About a year ago, Greta Thunberg said at one of the earliest climate rallies, "To all of you who choose to look the other way every day because you seem more frightened of the changes that prevent catastrophic climate change than the catastrophic climate change itself, your silence is almost worse of all. So, please, treat the climate crisis like the acute crisis it is and give us our future." Thank you very much.
Counselor McKelvey to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion. This motion is augmenting the great work that has been done by the Toronto Environment Alliance, Mayor Torrey, and Counselor Layton in preparation of this motion. It does three things. It seeks to improve engagement with the scientific and the business community. It seeks to establish a formal management system so that we can bring more accountability to Transform TO in our efforts to combat climate change. And thirdly, it reinforces our commitment to prepare for climate change through our resilience strategy. Again, I just want to thank the mayor and Counselor Layton for bringing this important motion forward. Four years ago, when I was about to run in the last election, I was with my boss in the subway, and he said, "Jennifer, why are you leaving our job? Why are you leaving us?" And I said, "'Cause I want to live in a world that's off-carbon." And that's a lot of what compelled me to run and a huge part of why I am here today. Twenty years ago, I was conducting research in Yellowknife, and I was very lucky to have the opportunity to work on hydrometric stations that were going to be looking at long-term climate change. And scientists then knew that the impacts would be felt stronger in the Arctic and the Subarctic and that they would have two to three degrees more warming than the rest of the planet. Indeed, 20 years later, scientists were right. Ten years ago, I was doing research in Greenland, and we were looking at the interactions between glaciers, groundwater, and talik lakes. And while I was up there conducting research in Kangir-Lusuak, the locals and the scientists that were out on the ice told us about the receding glaciers. And indeed, 10 years later, this small town of Kangir-Lusuak was on the news as the water levels were the highest they had ever seen. They had increased rapids, and in fact, the glaciers were melting even faster than they had ever anticipated. But this isn't just an Arctic and a Subarctic problem. This summer, I stood in the flooded parking lot of Rouge National Urban Park, and the water levels of Lake Ontario were 85 centimeters above the average for that time of year and had hit a record high. So, indeed, we know that climate change is real. We know that climate change is right here in Toronto, and it's affecting us all. And that's really why I'm so happy for this motion that we're passing here today, because it's ambitious and it's bold, and it's going to push us towards achieving net zero by 2050 or even possibly by 2040. And I just want to reiterate the importance of the resilience strategy. And the last part of my motion is reinforcing the connection between the resilience strategy and Transform TO. And under leadership with Counselor Pasternak, we passed a motion that was institutionalizing resilience into our daily decision-making here at City Hall. And I think this motion that we have here today is another step forward in that direction. So, thank you for bringing this forward, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. We do have a question for you, clarification, Counselor Carroll.
Thank you, yeah. In the second part of the motion, so what is a Business Advisory Committee? How do you see that unfolding?
So, it's a Scientific and Business Advisory Committee, and I've asked for a report back on what that could look like. But we don't really have a scientific steering committee here or a business steering committee on Transform TO specifically. So, my thought would be that they could provide peer review of the plans that we have to make sure that they are scientifically accurate and ambitious and that we're doing everything that we can at the municipal level.
So, would that then become an official peer review? Because the reason I ask is that in the past, once council has adopted a strategy and starts working on it, if we're going to hold it out for peer review, whoever is on the peer review has to be vetted and then adopted by council. Who gets to be on that? So, is it your intention that this new advisory committee would come back to us? We'd know who's on it and what their mandate was?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I've asked for a report back on what this could look like, what the options are. Because as you say, it is more complicated with municipal governance than any other agency where I've worked with, where we've had peer review. Peer review is common in the scientific community. It's something that's well-accepted.
We've had peer review here over solid weeks.
And so, as we have the plans, usually you would have a report or an addendum that is provided with the plan that has the advice of the steering panel, so that we would look at both of those in conjunction.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. I'm just asking for clarification because we have a history of peer review here. It just follows a certain process, and council has oversight over who gets to do the peer review. So, that is your intention, that that would come back?
That's my intention, because it is asking for a report back on what we could have in that business committee. So, it's options. So, I've asked to report back in Q2 on the options for establishing a Scientific and Business Advisory Committee.
Oh, okay. So, we're not establishing it, we're reporting back on?
Exactly. How could we do this in an efficient way?
Sorry, it scrolled a little quickly, and I couldn't see that. And then, in the third section, I had a question in the third section. If we can scroll back up, sorry.
It's on your desk that was just circulated.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. No, actually, this isn't it, Matt. Oh, here it is. Now I have it. Thank you. So, in the third section, where it says that we need to improve collaboration in the Transform TO role in the community with respect to climate change work, how does it need to be improved? How is it not working now?
So, right now, if you look through the motion as it was, it had throughout there to improve engagement with youth, to improve engagement with other institutions and organizations. So, this is just reinforcing that the academic and the business community are also important stakeholders that we should include in that discussion. What we're looking at here isn't necessarily an issue with...
Oh.
It's in addition to the other clauses that are in there. So, what we have here isn't arguably a technological challenge. I think that many business leaders have technology that can be adopted, but we have an important role in uptake of those technologies and in demonstrating to other municipalities and also to the community at large that these are viable options that should be implemented. So, again, it's in addition to all the other recommendations that are there, and it is just asking for a report back.
Okay, that was your last question. Thank you. Counselor Perks, you have a question, clarification?
Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, Speaker. I literally just got the copy of the motion this minute, and I haven't had a chance to fully digest it yet. So, I'd appreciate if I could just have five minutes to... I really don't like writing climate policy on the fly.
Okay, well, you're the next speaker on it.
So, I did ask for this sent it this morning, and I'm sorry that it took so long to come across your desk yet.
Counselor McKelvey? Hold on. Counselor Fletcher, question?
Yes, just on your list there of business, who is it, Counselor, that you have business and academics? There are a whole number of people that have, I'll call them, citizen experts, people that go to COP, IPCC people, pardon? Labor people that understand this, that... Would you be prepared, when that comes back, to look at how that should be fleshed out? Because there are a number of green experts that have the ability to assist rather than simply business and academics.
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Fletcher. So, those groups were all mentioned in the members' motion already. So, I was just specifically picking groups that I did not see explicitly mentioned in there to make sure they're also included. So, again, everything that I have here is not detracting in any way from the original motion. It's just adding some additional things to look at, and in all cases, I've asked for a report back on feasibility. So, it's not in any way saying to do any of these things. It's saying to consider, and if we do consider that, how it can be done.
No, I understand. I'm just making sure that in our tradition of getting this far, we have had a great number of scientific and business folks, but this advisory committee looks like it's simply scientific and business advisory.
Yeah, you could include them on it as well.
Looking at the peer review options and who would be there, I think it's very strong to have the community lens on what we're doing. Just want to make sure and see if you're okay with having what I'll just call the breadth of the community that seized by this there, because there'll be a number of people that are going to COP this year that might not be captured here, and there may be people, academics, that we haven't yet captured in our work. So, I appreciate what you're doing. I just want to make sure we have the breadth that's required.
Yeah, no, absolutely. This is a team sport, and none of us can do it alone. And that was the whole intention here, was to point out some groups that I didn't see explicitly mentioned and add them into it as well.
But you've added in to have a committee to peer review. Is that language that you were given by staff or is that something that you wrote?
So, again, it's looking for options, and those options could also come back and recommend that we include those other groups in there as well. Some sort of advisory capacity, so that through an adaptive formal management system, that there will be continual review and input into the process.
So, that could be amended here to include other groups. And I'm just following up on Counselor Carroll, that the peer review process, what's your understanding of that?
So, through peer review, normally what happens is a plan is prepared. It's sent to scientific, business, union, any experts. They would provide formal comments. Those comments would be dispositioned, and then they'd either be incorporated or there would be a report back on why those comments were not addressed.
Thank you. That was your last question. Counselor Perks, you ready?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I'm ready now. So, Counselor McKelvey, just to be clear, you've got three parts to your motion. The first adds academic institutions to the people that we generally consult with, right?
Yep.
Okay. The, I'm going to, the third, I'll come back to the second in a minute, adds two more actual actions, not things to get a report on, but actions. And in M, you say, "Improve collaboration with academic and the business community." So, you're actually taking a piece here and saying, "The academic and business communities have a special relationship that other community leaders, environmental activists, people who are from the native community and have a special wisdom to bring to this problem, they're not included, only the academic and business community," in your motion three.
No. So, if you pull up motion 10.3, the original, sorry, I'm finding the place on it right here.
I'll have that.
So, I am adding L in M. So, in here, it says, "A plan to collaborate with youth, including youth from equity-seeking groups. A plan to apply the city's lens to Transform TO and to ensure that equity groups are included. A plan to consult and cooperate with Indigenous communities. A plan to engage residents and stakeholders in decision-making." So, all those groups that you just spoke about were already included in the motion. So, this is just adding another one that says to have a plan to engage with the scientific and business community in Transform TO. So, it's not in any way detracting from any of the good work or words that are in here. It's adding to make sure that we're consulting with the scientific community in a meaningful way.
Yeah, and they're already being consulted in part three. But that's okay. You want to add them special, special. That's fine. It's just, unlike the answer you gave to Counselor Fletcher, you're not just asking for a report on this, you're directing that that happen, correct?
Right.
Okay, good. In terms of the report that you're asking back, what the effect of your two is, is to say that instead of city staff reporting annually on how we're, what progress we're making, you're changing that so that that report back also includes creating this new Scientific and Business Advisory Committee.
So, there's two parts. So, I'm not changing what was there, which was asking for the annual report back. That's not changed. That's still there. So, part B.
You put it in in your B, yeah.
Yeah, so part B is exactly the same as what was there.
You've got a new A.
All we've done is added an additional A that's asking for a report back to look at the feasibility of these three things. And it's not saying to do it. It's saying to look at the feasibility. And in that, it says to look at having, you know, an adaptive resource management system.
Yeah, I know that. But it's your two, it's your sub-two.
It's asking to look at whether we should, options, and whether that would be feasible, and to look at the interrelationship between city strategies. Because as you know, we have multiple strategies that overlap, and we need to map them out.
I understand. The thing I'm trying to understand is, though, why...
Counselor Perks, that was your last question.
Why are business leaders peers and nobody else in the process peers?
That was your last question.
And we can add them in as well.
Thank you. Counselor Perks or Counselor Thompson, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. I think that Counselor McKelvey may have just responded to the question I was about to ask. It's about adding those additional groups, so community experts, labor, and others and so on. Are you prepared to add it to the motion?
If that's what the recommendation is, yeah.
Okay. So, it's not, but I'm just, we're asking if you, if we could just add it. I mean, I can move an amendment to the motion to add those groups, but if it's easier, staff are able just to add them with your concurrence, that would be great.
We're asking for options, so that could be included in the options.
Madam Clerk?
No, but would you be interested in just amending your motion?
Right.
That's what the council is asking you. Are you?
Then we have peace in the valley, is Counselor Perks.
Counselor McKelvey?
Yeah, I see that as friendly amendment. We're asking for options, so whatever options are, should be considered.
But you're agreeing to it.
Yeah, I agree with the premise. What I want is to just make sure that we have people looking at these plans outside of us externally and saying, "We are being as ambitious and bold as we can."
I think we're in agreement, Speaker, if we can add those names.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pasternak, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to the mover. I don't see any references here to the TRCA. I believe the City of Toronto is putting close to $7 million into the TRCA. Do you see a role for them to play in your mini-action plan?
Absolutely, if they are included in the options. And I think they are included in the group above that says, "Engage job seekers, workers, unions, academic institutions, relevant sectors, and social service agencies." So, I think they're covered in relevant sectors, but you could also include them. Again, we're asking for an options to have peer review.
So, as you know, we don't, this council has not adopted a resiliency report. It's sort of floating out there, nor have we seen the TRCA's reports on island flooding. Does your motion at all expedite the way in which we can get these reports before committee and council to adopt them as city policy?
Oh, I wish. I wish. No, so what it has here is regarding resilience, is looking at actions 4.2 and 4.5, which are interrelated with Transform TO. The first one, I believe, staff are doing anyway. So, it's just, again, reinforcing the importance of integrating resilience into Transform TO. And then, the second one is looking at how we can establish leadership in resilience. And that's recommendation 4.5. And hopefully, through that, maybe we could advance some of those efforts that you and I think are both very important.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. First of all, I want to congratulate the mayor and Counselor Layton on doing this. When we wrote Transform TO, the best science that was available said that if we're able to get to the 80% reduction by 2050, there was a possibility of what the scientists call "the soft landing," where, yes, there will be consequences of climate change, but they won't be an existential threat to civilization. Since then, the science has advanced and said, "To avoid that existential threat, we actually have to do better. We have to get to 1.5, which is net neutrality, in a shorter timeline." And that's because we missed the opportunity for early action. Anyone who's ever worked on climate issues, particularly with the mitigation half of it, knows that early action is much more valuable than later action. And because Canada and other nations in the world missed that window for early action, the amount that you have to reduce and the period that you have to reduce it in continue to shrink. We are now in an emergency circumstance where everything that we can do, literally everything that we can do, has to be considered. And I hope that unlike previous moments, when this council has tried to wrestle with the issue of climate change, we don't devise an ambitious plan... the issue of climate change, we don't devise an ambitious plan and then begin to weaken it with a thousand cuts. Transform TO has been delayed and reduced three times by this council since it was first written. The initial implementation date was pushed back a year. When that initial implementation came, the, some of the actions were put off for six months, and then in last year's budget, again, some of the actions were delayed. We're now two full years behind on some of the programs that we originally imagined delivering as part of transform TO. And it's because we, you know, have to weigh different things. At this moment, we're all clearly focused, deal with the emergency, insist that our children, our grandchildren, and the generations that follow them don't bear the burden of our inaction. And it's, it's very easy to see. But in January, we're going to have a different set of problems. We're going to have a provincial government that's downloading costs on to us. We're going to have uncertainty, as we continue to do in the real estate market. We're going to continue to see some of the costs of delivery of service growing faster than inflation in an environment where many around this council chamber say, no, the most important thing is to make sure that we don't increase our revenues faster than inflation. And I hope that at that moment, at that moment, we can bring the clarity of mind that we have here today that says, no, it's an emergency. It is the most important thing we do. If we want to maintain the quality of life that we all enjoy now and offer it to our children, or at least have a 50-50 shot of doing that, we're actually going to have to spend some public money. I appreciate that the mayor is saying, yep, you know, it's, it's good that we have now engaged all the big buildings in the downtown that are privately owned and encouraging them to do what they can. But I'll tell you, some of the things that are going to need to be done are things that don't have a good return on investment, that will actually hurt shareholder value, that will require them to spend money that they don't make back if we are going to reduce our emissions sufficiently so that the next generation doesn't bear the cost of our inaction. And when business can't shoulder that burden, there is only one way to do it, and that's for society at large to shoulder the burden. And there's only one way that society at large shoulders that burden, and that's by spending public money. Absolutely, the federal government has been absent on this. Absolutely, we have a provincial government that is actively hostile to spending the money on this. And more than what ought to be put on the municipal property tax, might have to be put on the municipal property tax. Is it fair? No. Is it right that the federal government talks big and acts small? No. Is it right that the provincial government is hostile to solving this problem? No. But that doesn't excuse us from picking up their burdens until they learn better. That doesn't excuse us from, from leading by showing that governments can make a commitment. That doesn't excuse us from having a clean hands approach. Yes, we asked Torontonians to pay more, because nobody else would, and we knew it was the right thing to do.
Councillor Fletcher?
Yes, Speaker. I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you again to the mayor and to councillor Leighton for this motion that recognizes a climate emergency, just as I'd say the 100,000 people that marched on Friday were recognizing a climate emergency and that asked us to step up and do that. And I took a video, which I won't show you, of the entire march. Everybody there, they had homemade, I've not seen anything like that. They are seized with this issue of climate, and it is young people in our city who are seized with this, supported by their families, by their schools, by their churches, by their organizations, and now with this motion, by their city. And I can't stress the importance of this. I just want to say councillor Leighton had sent a tweet out, somebody had a sign there that was an old Jack Leighton election sign that they brought to the march, and they had the front of it, I don't know if they had the front, but councillor Leighton said, not surprised to see him here, he's been on this file for years. And that is a tribute to the Leitons, father to son. It was a beautiful picture. Our city has really been a leader in the past and presently, and we need to be in the future. I mean a strong leader in a number of ways, and I want to touch on two. One is the establishment of the Better Buildings Partnership. We established long ago that we can retrofit our buildings and capture the savings in operations to pay for it. That was the city that established that. Others are doing that, but that was our Better Buildings Partnership established in the early 1900s. We also established N-Wave, which, I'm sorry, I want to say, we did sell, perhaps we shouldn't have, but what an environmental leader in technology. So while we say we want to partner with business, I also think we need to be open to every creative possibility of establishing those signature programs in the City of Toronto that have led the way environmentally, not only in Toronto, but around the world. Those are world leader programs that were established through our city. I want to touch on something councillor McKelvey had, and thank her for strengthening this motion, that our lake levels are rising. If you, the island is basically done. There is no Gibraltar Beach, the beaches are finished, Cherry Beach is practically washed away, the eastern beaches are eroding. Go out to Scarborough, we've heard about the parking lot, the Rouge. This is not happening once. This is now basically a condition that we are going to have to live with. And there's all many reasons for it, but this is the new normal. This isn't something that's strange. Years ago, when then Mayor Miller established the Environment Office at the city, there was a number of reports. One of them was about adaptation. How do we adapt to climate change? And I happened to chair that, that committee at that time. And that's one thing. How do we make sure we have enough walls that the water doesn't get over? That's dealing with the results. I think this council, this city, the people I saw on the street, want us to deal with the causes, not the, only the results. And that means being bold. It means we have to reverse the impacts of climate change, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not just deal with the fact that they're there and how we're going to mitigate them. It's easier, it seems more attractive as an engineering solution to mitigate and adapt, but I think we are into reversing what we have done. And that means we are going to spend money, and we're going to have to spend money. Councillor Perk has indicated that, you know, we stumbled along getting transform TO going. It was the community that pushed us into this. Friends, it's the community that's pushing us one more time, those tens and tens of thousands of young Torontonians on our street. They want us to step up, they want us to do the right thing, they want us to be bold and creative, and I for one, am going to answer their call.
Thank you. Councillor Bradford?
Thanks very much. Through the speaker, I'd like to thank the mayor and councillor Leighton for bringing this forward today, and, you know, particularly councillor Leighton for his work over the decades on this file. It's nice to be here together as a council, all moving in this same direction. I'd also like to thank Jennifer McKelvey, councillor McKelvey, for her amendment on this. I think it makes a motion better, and I'll be supporting that. Like a number of you, I was at the climate strike on Friday, and frankly, it was heartening to see the tens of thousands of Torontonians, particularly youth, many from beaches east York, taking action on this issue. And, and frankly, it was very fitting that this was coming to council the following week. We deal with urgent issues in this chamber all the time, but the recommendations in this motion have a different kind of urgency. And that's because it's generational urgency. Frankly, the decisions that we're making here today need to be considered in the context of those who will be following. The opportunity to make impact is about the steps that we as councillors, as elected officials, can take today to provide a better future for those tomorrow. We all see the impacts of a changing climate around the world. We can actually see it quite acutely along our waterfront. Toronto has many waterfront communities, and you can see that every spring and every fall down at the water. And that can be quite daunting. But like many issues, they are dealt with and delivered at the local level. Now, we of course are going to need help and support from federal and provincial governments to do this. That is critical. But when it comes to actually moving the needle on GHG emissions, the biggest contributors, of course, are transportation, housing, our building stock, thermal. Those are all things where we have a lot of jurisdiction, and frankly, a lot of opportunity to make a difference. So I'm grateful that this motion actually sets up everything so that we can move forward on that file. You know, if we're going to be measuring it, then we're more accountable. We can, we can take actions and make adjustments as we move forward. That's really important. And frankly, the notion of declaring a climate emergency is to make it clear that this is a priority for this issue for us as a council, for us as a city, to move forward and take concrete, actionable measures. So again, just wrapping up, I'm, I'm very glad to see that we're working collaboratively on this, because that's the kind of leadership it is going to take for us to address the climate change file. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the mayor and councillor Leighton for bringing this forward. I thank McKelvey for strengthening it. And of course, what we were doing here is not enough. We have to put money behind much of the recommendations that are before us. We have to put strong policy behind it. We need the private sector to come on board with the tripartite agreements, and of course, we need our federal and provincial counterparts as well. As, as a recent member of the TRCA, just had my first meeting on Friday, looking inside that organization, they play an important role in, in our role, in our, in our efforts to mitigate climate change and extreme weather events, in resiliency, in flooding, in a knowledge base. Certainly, they, they, and we're putting, as I mentioned earlier, close to $7 million into the TRCA, we should be getting a lot out of it. I think at the local level, certainly in the area that I represent, basement flooding continues to be one of the biggest problems across the neighborhoods in York Centre Ward Six. This results in enormous property damage, this results in people having their homes full of moisture and mold, and at the same time, they then start all over in an endless cycle in a battle with their insurance companies, in a battle with the City of Toronto, in a battle with the restoration services. Homeownership should not be like this. People who invest in their homes and take the risk of owning a home should not be in a situation in which their most important asset is constantly at risk when an extreme weather event takes place. It's our responsibility here at the City of Toronto to do everything we can to protect people in their homes, to protect their investment, to make sure, to make sure they are safe, to make sure they know we're doing everything possible. And certainly, the package before us is part of that. I would once again reiterate that without strong policy, we cannot get things done. We're still waiting a committee for the resiliency report. We're still waiting a committee for the Ontario flooding report developed by the TRCA, which was handed over to the city some weeks ago. We need those documents so we can adopt policy, so we can say we're doing everything from the policy end of things. And of course, we need measurability and accountability, the ongoing reporting system. A report card of sorts is vital. With that being said, I'm glad that this is before us. It's an important social issue, it is the most transformative public policy statement of our time, and the city must be, must be committed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Your last speaker, Mayor Torry.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to begin by saying thank you, as a number have done, to councillor Leighton for his work and for his collaboration on this, including the consultation he did with people in the community, where we often can get some of the best advice that we can get. And I think, and I want to thank councillor McKelvey again for expending some effort on doing some additional things that I think will help us with a better result here. And I think that collaboration is consistent with what we're doing here today and, and the spirit in which we're doing it. The election that's on, federal election, has created a degree of uncertainty, for example, with respect to what national goals could be going forward. Other activities that have taken place in other places, either at the national or sub-national level, have created uncertainties with respect to the full participation of all governments in trying to address this, whether it's here, in Canada, and Ontario, or elsewhere. But I think that we, it's all the more reason, this uncertainty, why we have to declare ourselves very clearly today and declare ourselves with respect to the urgency that we attach to this challenge, as a number of speakers have made allusion to today. And, and we need look no further than on the public side, the Toronto Island, or the shoreline of Lake Ontario, and all that goes with that, or on the private side, the householders and homeowners that councillor Pasternak just made reference to, and the experiences they're having over and over again as a result of this most urgent problem. So it's time for this city to reinforce our sense of urgency, to reinforce our determination, to reinforce our ambition, to use the words that councillor Leighton used, to do more faster. Toronto does have good plans, and even some of the early assessments, for example, from the carbon disclosure project, have given us a solid assessment for our efforts to date. And, and I will take some issue, I'm not going to take up time now with it, with the characterization of the efforts to date offered by councillor Perks here, Madam Speaker. But there's no question, regardless of how you make the assessment of what's been done to date and what others might say about it, you can always do more faster. So I want to see us add to, and this is really just to talk a little bit about things we have done. We have done 21 energy retrofits at Toronto Community Housing Buildings. And that's something to be proud of, it's something that stands as an example, but it's just a start. And so I want to see us do more faster in that area. I want to see us add to the 60 electric buses that we've acquired at the TDC. I think we've done that, as I never apologize for doing in a prudent way, to make sure the 60 electric buses, that first of all, we buy the best ones, and secondly, that electric buses work in our particular climate and, and as part of integrating them completely into our transit system. I want to see us add to the 100, 100 solar installations that we have put in since the beginning of these programs on city-owned property, and, and do more faster. And all of these things are going to be things that we have to do to add to all of these initiatives and have other ones as quickly as possible. Indeed, the purpose of the Green Will program, and I don't present it, again, further to the comments of councillor Perks, as being the answer or the only answer, but I think it is going to be a very significant step forward to have the school boards. Think about having the school boards sitting in the room, which they came to my office at my invitation, the hospitals, the universities, sitting with the leading companies from the private sector, who, let's be frank, have done more, perhaps for reasons of their own economic self-interest over time, but they've done more so we can learn from them. They will partner with us, they will partner with the school boards, and these are people for which we don't necessarily have direct responsibility, but which most certainly own huge amounts of real estate in our cities, buildings being the biggest single contributor to, to greenhouse gas emissions. And so I look to that group and other groups that will form like it as part of this collaborative approach we often have to take, because we are cities and we have limited legislative powers to do things. So I look to the innovation, to the ingenuity, to the financing, to the best practices, to the teaching of all of these partners to make sure that we, that we can move forward. And I think the biggest, biggest achievement may well come, not so much even in the achievement of the Green Will project, but in how it helps us to translate down to smaller entities, the, the two-story medical building that somebody owns in Scarborough, or, or things like that, where they don't have sophisticated departments of people to have energy reduction programs, but we must have them participating in this, and we must get it down to the level of every citizen, thousands of people, thousands of buildings. I, I guess I would just conclude, Madam Speaker, by saying this. I, I, you know, nobody's going to accuse me of being excited. And I've said many times before, and I repeat it again, people will pass judgment on the level of excitement I bring at the time of the, the next judgment that happens in 2022. But when it comes to the challenges that have been put in front of me, getting funding for transit, getting funding for and having a national housing strategy, when it comes to getting us going on reaching higher affordable housing targets, I'm consistently determined, and I'll be the same way with moving forward on this, and making sure that we're accountable here, but that we're also very strong advocates to the other governments. You know, I won't be here at 2050, in 2050, at least that's not the plan, but I will want to work with councillor Leighton and other colleagues, and with other governments, and with the private sector, and with citizens, to make sure that we can show the kind of determination. And I would just say, by way of a final comment, if people don't buy the environmental arguments, if they don't buy the social arguments, if they don't buy the scientific arguments, there is no one out there that can argue with the fact that councillor Pasternak referred to and others. There's a business case to be made for doing this. So I'll sell this to anybody any way that I have to, because it is imperative that we move forward with actually making these achievements for all of those reasons, and getting them done more and faster, as councillor Leighton said. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment by Counselor McKelvey. On favor. Carried. On the item as amended, recorded. You want a recorded vote on, on the amendment? Well, there was just. Recorded vote. All right, that's fine, recorded vote.
Counselor Holliday, please. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Bylau.
Yes, it's revised, Counselor McKelvey. We did receive a copy of the revised.
Counselor Bylau, please.
The amendment carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Item as amended, recorded vote.
The item as amended carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll now go to the mayor's second key item, which we're, we're going to be dealing with, is EX 8.20, EX 8.26, and members' motion 10.2. If we can have a, a motion to waive referral on members' motion 10.2 by Counselor Carroll. On favor. Carried. So that's before us now, so we'll deal with all three. Counselor Cressy.
Thank you. Speaker, perhaps before I begin, are there representatives of Toronto Police Services here to answer questions? We're on a TPS funding item.
Don't believe they're here? Okay, so. We don't have them here, Counselor Cressy. They, well, they should have been here. It was this mayor's, okay, so what about, do you have any questions on, because we're dealing with 8.26 as well and MM 10.2? Okay. Counselor Cole?
I just, I wanted to ask a question about bail tracking. In other words, how do we track if a person has been given bail? And is that person loose in the community? I was just wondering, maybe Legal could answer that? How do we get that information?
I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that at the moment, but I will find out for you. And just, just to ensure I understand the question, is how we find out someone's information about someone who's been convicted's bail terms?
No, no, someone that has been arrested.
Yes.
And then the community tries to find out whether that person has been released on bail. So the community phones my office and says, did that person, is he free or she free on bail? And I can't get an answer.
Madam Speaker, what I can say is that bail hearings are generally public, and the, the terms of the bail would be something that could be obtained from the police. So anyone looking for that information should start with the police.
I, I've been to bail hearings, but trying to find out if that person, maybe I can't attend all the bail hearings. So if there is a, there's so many bail hearings, I'd like to know what happened to those persons charged with a gun crime. Were they released? On how much bail? Are they in the community again? I can't get the, where do I get that information to share with my community? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Madam Speaker, other than working through the police, I'm not aware of another avenue to obtain that information.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Cressy.
I, thank you, Speaker. Just on a point of order, I, in my questions, I have questions of the police, given that the item is additional funding to support Toronto Police Services. I mean, should we not stand down the item until they're here to answer questions?
So, to, to the mayor. Because we're dealing with your second key item.
You know, I was just asking my own staff, Madam Speaker, about why they wouldn't have concluded, but it may well be that we in the collective sense, somebody from the city didn't phone to say it's likely to be on at 12 o'clock on Wednesday. So we're just trying to figure out now how to get somebody to come, because obviously there should be somebody here to answer questions from the police service. You know, because the matter involved is sending, at least one part of it is sending money or committing money to them. So we're working on that, and I apologize, I mean, I don't know whether it's my office's responsibility, but somebody should have called them, or they should have figured it out, but the bottom line is, we're going to get somebody here.
So should we hold the item down till they get here?
I guess there's probably some other things we could do, because I mean, if they're not here at this moment, it's not, they're not going to be here, they're not coming from upstairs, they're coming from, probably from police headquarters, so.
To you, Madam Speaker. I can advise, I've gotten in touch with some of the senior command at TPS, and they're going to look at getting us somebody here, so they will require a bit of time, though.
Okay, so I, I, I would think that somebody would have asked them to be here.
Madam Speaker.
Like Counselor Thompson.
Madam Speaker, given the gravity of this issue and the importance of it, I, I don't simply think that we should accept this idea that someone from policing should come and talk to us. The chief of police should be in this chamber to address these particular issues. It's one of the top priorities in this city. The chief has expressed an interest in having resources. He should be here to be able to speak with members of council. So I'd ask that the chief be here unless he's out of town for some strange reason, but I think this is most important, Speaker, and through the mayor, that the chief be invited to come to speak to us. And then maybe I'd like to ask, Madam Speaker, maybe the clerk can help me to understand this. I think the mayor just spoke, and he indicated that perhaps my office should have called and so on. I didn't, I didn't realize it was our responsibility to actually ensure that specific staff members are here to deal with particular issues. I'd like to understand what the procedures are.
No, we're, we stopped questions. Counselor Cole, we stopped questions because this staff are not here. Yeah, you, you can have the floor again. Okay, Counselor Thompson, I, I don't know what the answer to your question is.
Through you, Madam Speaker, if I can assist. So Deputy Chief Raymer, we're, they're trying to make him available, just working on a time to get him here. He was the one, I believe, that attended committee on this particular item previously. I can certainly express the concern of council in respect to the chief's attendance. I don't know what the status of that is, but I can, I can advise, I've been advised, Deputy Chief Raymer will make himself available at a point today as soon as he can.
Okay. Okay, what we'll do, Mayor Torry.
Understanding what Counselor Thompson was saying about the chief as the chief, but I can just say, and I think counselors, yourself, Madam Speaker, and Counselor Ford, know that Deputy Chief Raymer has been integrally, integrally involved in this area of, of trying to combat guns and gangs. So I think if he's the one who's able to come, that that certainly will be not just anybody from the police service, it'll be the deputy chief who's principally responsible for this. So I just think if that's who's able to come, I would take that as being not the chief, but certainly something that's going to be very, a very knowledgeable person to come and talk to us.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll hold the item down for later, and we'll go, we'll continue with the agenda. Yes, Counselor Cole?
Some of my questions were not of the police, of our city staff.
Yeah, but we're going to hold all the questions down until the police get here, and we'll start, and you can have.
Well, it's not all about the police. We also should be asking.
Yeah, but we can, we can. Yeah.
Can I ask questions of city staff?
Well, I just said we're going to hold the item down until the police get here, and then everyone can have a chance to ask questions, the city staff or the police. Okay? Thank you. Counselor Fletcher, would you like to deal with your item?
I would like to. Chief Planner has just had a conversation, and I think I need to be briefed along with the DCM. So not yet, next item.
Okay.
Before noon, I'm hoping, before 12:30.
Okay. So I was just advised by staff that the deputy chief will be here for 2 o'clock. Counselor, page three, EX 8.3, Counselor Layton. So we're going to continue on the agenda until we recess, and then at 2 o'clock, we'll go back to the, to the items. Because we have a full agenda, Counselor Perutza. Okay, Counselor Layton?
My apologies, the clerks don't yet have my motion. I, I was under the impression I might have a little bit more time, given how large the item was before this. So I don't yet have the motion prepared to give to clerks.
We're not recessing.
I don't think we should recess now. I'm not going to agree with Counselor Cole there, but.
We've got a full agenda. Okay, Counselor Perks, would you be ready for EX 8.6? Okay, we're gonna, members of council, we're going to continue on the agenda, so please remain in your seats so we can move and do business. Okay, Counselor Perks?
Yes, I have some questions of staff to begin.
Okay, questions to staff. We're on EX 8.6.
Racing to the microphone. Here we go.
If I can have all staff and members of council in your seats.
No, they're right here, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm ready to go. Thank you very much. So the report before us looks at a variety of metrics on how we're doing in achieving diversity in our workforce. One metric that caught my eye is that while we're doing well, sort of in terms of dealing with diversity of racialized people in the middle areas of the public service, at the top of the public service, we're not doing as well. Is that a correct reading?
Through the speaker, yes, there is less diversity in our leadership ranks than there is in our frontline staff, correct?
And for some of the senior ranks, the, the process of hiring them is different than the process of hiring through the rest of the public service. Correct about that?
Through the speaker, there are some, some of our, some particular positions that are council-appointed, but the other senior-level positions are staff-appointed in the ordinary course.
So given that there's, there's that difference, would it be of value if there were a motion for your department or the city manager to review how it is, you know, we select candidates and interview and so on for those most senior positions, to see if we could do better in achieving diversity at those? Would that be helpful?
Through the speaker, we would not, if you're speaking, are you speaking specifically about the positions that are council-appointed?
Yes.
We would not, I mean, certainly it would be helpful for us to take a look at what our processes are in that respect, but there are, for privacy reasons, we do not report data on groups of fewer than 10, and the council, my, my, I think, I believe there are about nine positions that are council-appointed, so we wouldn't be able to report specifically, exclusively about that subset of employees, but we can certainly look at what our practices are in that respect.
So we might not be able, because of our privacy reasons, we, we can't go through what has happened historically, but there may be some advice you could give us on what we could do to achieve better going forward?
Certainly, we can take a look at that, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, you have questions?
I do, Speaker, through you, to staff. The report had the subject matter is fostering diversity in the Toronto public service. I get that, because we talk about that all the time. What about equity? There is a distinction from my perspective. Diversity is more about a look and feel, but equity is around contribution and having those diverse individuals being a tangent and, and, and complementary contributors to decisions that are being made. Is it now the case in the city of Toronto where that is in fact the case?
Through the speaker, it is, I mean, our work is both on numbers and include diversity, equal representation, but more than that, on engagement and inclusion in decision-making, and which is one of the reasons why we are interested not just in headcount, but also in where people are within the organization and their ability to input on decision-making. So to my comment earlier, is we recognize that there is not equitable access currently in our leadership ranks, which is where a lot of decision-making is. So that's why we're working on, we're working on strategies to increase the diversity in our leadership, in our leadership ranks. But our focus is on diversity, but beyond that, or more importantly, to your point, inclusion and equitable input in decision-making.
So how will we recognize a difference going forward based on the work that you're doing now? What will we see, or what are the measurements that you'd be utilizing, that you'll be reporting out through to council? Because it's simply beyond this notion of just diversity, because the view is that diversity is, for some, an, an important accomplishment, but those diverse people that you're putting into place, when they're not really participating in the decision-making as part of the equity component, they themselves are perhaps worse off than what we're trying to achieve. So how do we measure that?
Through the speaker, there are a number, I mean, what we've reported in this, what's included in this report is one metric, and that is related to representation. However, we are measuring inclusion in a number of ways. So one of the, one of the things that we did this year for the first time is, when we did our employee engagement survey, we did ask some questions about demographic, about representation, so that we're also able to measure how engaged our, our diverse staff are feeling and how, in, how, how included they're feeling. So we're looking at that. But then beyond that, there are also, these are an equity lens tool, and there are other tools that we're, we're supporting in the organization to help the organization as a whole make better decisions that are, with an equity lens.
And so my question now is for the city manager, through you, Madam Speaker, to the city manager. I wonder, Mr. City Manager, if you could comment in terms of what your vision and a strategy that will include not only diversity, but also equity as a component part of inclusion in whether or not it's the LGBTQ community, whether or not it's the brown people, the black people, the Asian, and so on and so forth, in this organization?
So through the speaker, as you likely know, people in equity, Alma's group, report directly to me. They're not part of another part of the organization, so it's obviously critical that I have the person who's got the best ideas as to how to. person who's got the best ideas as to how to improve our equity, our diversity, is directly working with me and is reporting on what progress we are making. So our goal is to reflect this community in terms of our civil service. And so the tactics that we can use to do that, from recruiting to making decisions about who we hire, is all being a direct line between Alma and myself, and for that matter, as well with our senior leadership team. So that's our-- I'd say it's more than our goal, it's kind of our mission right now. I mean, we, from a very senior leadership team, we certainly have, from a gender standpoint, and we have, you know, I'd say, good balance or representation from a gender standpoint. I would say from an equity and a racialization standpoint, we're not where we need to be, where we need to reflect what this community is-- how it actually presents itself on a day-to-day basis. So all that work is top of mind of ours, and hence the reason why people in equity report to me directly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Counselor Wong-Tam, question?
Yes, thank you. And this is following up on an answer that was provided to Counselor Perks. With respect to the number of council-appointed positions, you had stated, I believe, nine. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Can you remind us what those nine positions are, that council particularly sanctions, and so we make the final hiring decision?
So the city manager, through the speaker, the city manager, the deputy city manager, the managers, the CFO, the city clerk, the city solicitor, I believe also the chief planner--
No, you're not the chief planner--
Chief building official, sorry.
Okay, so thank you. And so, just again, following on--
Sorry, one more. The medical officer of health, there were nine.
Okay, thank you. So that's very helpful. So those nine individuals are the only ones in the Toronto public service that the final hiring decision is placed before council.
That's correct.
And so through the recruitment and the evaluation, all of that is done through the HR process. Is it the same HR process that we would deploy when hiring other members of the Toronto public service, or is it a different HR process?
It is a different HR process, to the extent that councillors are involved in that recruitment.
And so that's councillors, as well as the mayor's office?
That's correct.
And is it those two-- so just again, I'm following on the line of question. Is it the general population of Toronto public service, we're doing, you know, a decent job, it could always be improved, of making sure there's a representation from a diversity of communities, including racialized, LGBT, Indigenous, and women, and non-binary, trans people? Could be better, but we're doing okay. Is it the nine positions that are council-influenced and council-approved, that we're not necessarily hitting the same type of diversity marks as the general population of the TPS? Is that what I heard from you?
Through the chair, that is not the case necessarily. As we go higher in the organization, from the frontline positions to the supervisor, there is less diversity there. And then you go from supervisor to manager, less diversity. And to the extent that that-- those nine positions are within our division head and above, and that is the highest level within the organization, that is where we are the least reflective on some of the equity data that we're collecting. So we do not collect or report on that, on those nine positions in particular, but they are rolled up into the division head and above category. So we report on them, just not that subset.
So the overall picture that we can conclude from this report is that at the entry-level, mid-level positions, the city of Toronto as a corporation is making advancements in hiring people who reflect the population of the city of Toronto. We're doing okay there, could always be improved. It's the management supervisory roles and higher-up level of leadership where we're actually failing the grade. Or we could do a lot better. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. That is where we're having-- where the least restrictive. We have made some progress, but that's where the biggest gaps exist.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Pasternak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff. When it comes to our governance model at the city, it's a complicated situation in which divisions such as fire services and police have their own HR division, and they make their own hiring decisions. It never comes to the council floor. How would your initiative here impact those divisions?
Through-- to the chair, the fire services is part of our-- our division provides support to fire services and their recruitment. We do not currently provide support to Toronto public service, police service, however. So in terms of-- one of the things that we're trying to do on this and other initiatives is that we're trying to work better with our agencies. In fact, in this month, I'm having a meeting with the HR leads from our agencies, and just to convene a table so that we're sharing our best practices and trying to influence one another and learn from each other's experiences. So we do not currently provide support, but we're going to provide some informal channels for that knowledge sharing to happen, and so that we can all kind of progress together.
So last term, through the committee, I chaired community development and recreation. We spent an enormous amount of time working with fire services on the recruitment policy, trying to create a more diverse workforce, zeroing in on their pool. And it seemed to me their recruitment net was no way far enough or wide enough to ever get the kind of diversity that the city was looking at. Do you think that's a part of the core problem here, that we're just-- we're not really reaching out to the diverse communities the way we should be?
Through the chair, one of the initiatives that we've recently implemented that will give us some really good data for us to analyze where the challenges might be is our new HR information systems, which we rolled out last week. It allows us to collect diversity data at every stage in the process, so that we can identify, for instance, if you are correct, if it is outreach. We do recognize that outreach is obviously an important part of it. Do people actually know that these jobs exist? Do they know how to apply for it? So we have people within our team now that are focused on doing some of that work, but we will also have good data to figure out where the bottlenecks are. Are they not applying? Is it that they're applying and they're getting screened out? We'll know going forward where those challenges are, but I acknowledge that outreach is perhaps one area where we could be doing more.
So a common problem that's been brought to our office, and maybe you can shed light on it. Is it correct that a female employee of the city of Toronto returning from maternity leave cannot convert to part-time? Is there any-- requests to go to part-time have been denied? Is that correct? Is that city policy?
I--
Collective bargaining?
Through the chair, I can confirm that that would not be the city policy, to preclude people who are coming back from parental leave and requesting to go part-time, that they're precluded from that. We certainly do not have a policy that does that. There are, depending on the nature of the employment, like if it's a unionized employee or a non-unionized employee, there might be different rules that apply, but I'm not-- I can certainly say that we do not have a policy whereby people are precluded from doing so. But there might be operational requirements, there might be a number of things to juggle in a particular case, but we do encourage and work with divisions, including our Human Rights Office, on how to accommodate people's family status-related requests.
So it could be happening?
It's possible, but I hope not.
Okay. Now, you touched on an important point. Do you think our collective bargaining agreements, where we're recruiting internally first, are a big barrier to diversity?
Through the chair, we work with our union partners on all of these initiatives, including our initiatives on diversity and inclusion, and so I would say that we consider them to be willing partners, and we're hoping that we will continue-- as we do more work in this area, that they will continue to work along with us. I have not seen anything that suggests that they will be resistant to it, but there are certainly rules in the collective agreement that we have to abide by, in terms of how we fill positions. So that may-- seniority, for instance, is a consideration for us when we fill positions, so that means that we're not going to the market on some of these-- on some positions, because we have to-- there are orders of consideration. There are a number of rules, but I would not say that our union partners are not supportive of our diversity initiatives, but we do intend to work more closely with them on these things.
That was your last question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I have a motion. That city council direct the city manager and the chief people officer to report to the executive committee on strategies for achieving better diversity in council-appointed staff positions. It's fairly straightforward. You heard the answers from the chief people officer. It's an area in our hiring practice where we can do better. They simply asked for some advice. I don't know what that advice would be. I hope that it's of great value, so that we can do better in our senior-most positions. And I think that's important, because the senior-most positions are the ones the public sees. When, you know, there's a big issue, a legal issue, and we're asking questions of the city solicitor, it's the city solicitor's face that we see in the evening news. I could go through the list, but you all know what I mean. So I encourage you to support this. I think we can do better, and I think this is a way of getting some advice on how to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly want to thank the staff for bringing this report. I also want to thank the mayor, quite frankly, on this issue. His leadership has been invaluable to this. I think it's extremely important. The city manager as well. I've had many discussions with the city manager. I believe what he's actually saying to me, and I know for a fact that he wants to see a change, not simply reflecting what we often tend to talk about, which is diversity, to a large extent, but diversity isn't sufficient. I think that inclusion-- and I use the term equity around that to say that it's important when you have talented men and women from different backgrounds in any organizations, particularly a government organization, where many people in our society is looking to see that that organization reflects them, in terms of mirroring their aspirations and their desire and so on. And so often in organization, I see that they say that they want to reflect the diversity, and they want to bring people in and so on. But what I'm learning, and particularly I'm learning from the very people who are brought in, that they seem to be brought in, and it's really just for show. And diversity for show is really not diversity at our strength, in terms of the motto of this city, which is diversity is our strength. So I think I want to go beyond that. And I don't want to complicate it by saying we're going to move a motion here or there, because if it isn't part of the strategy in terms of reflecting the growth and the development of this city with respect to inclusion, then inasmuch as we try to affect diversity, which demonstrate a more pictorial effect of showing what the landscape of the people reflecting in our society, that they're in place, they may be at a desk, they may be in an office, and so on and so forth. But if they are not part of the decision-making process that we have established throughout the varying departments in this organization, it really is for naught. It really is just for show. I think the key thing that we have to remember here is that although you bring people in reflecting the diversity, if we don't capitalize on their talent, we are then amputating their spirit and their growth. And I think that has a far more reaching and problematic effect to people, because it seems as if we're just doing things for show. If that's what we're doing, I don't think that's a path that we need to go. We need to evaluate that. I am buoyed by what I'm seeing in the work that's being done by the staff in terms of data gathering, decision-making, and obviously embedding, you know, an equity lens into this, which incorporates the inclusion. If we're not doing this, we're going to fail ourselves. If we fail ourselves, we'll fail our society. And so I want to make sure that we pay attention to this and ensure that inclusion is as important as the component part of diversity, which we're trying to achieve. And I'm talking about diversity for all, so that every person can actually benefit. It's not happening now. There are a lot of people in this city, and I realize that we're talking about our own internal development, but there are many organizations in this city where they're reflecting diversity, but the diversity does not include inclusion. I would perhaps hope that someday the mayor may convene a major, you know, roundtable with business leaders to talk about this very concept of inclusion, not just simply this concept of diversity, because it's actually failing us now. Although we're including people as part of our diversity strategy, that diversity is insufficient with respect to inclusion. If we don't have inclusion, we're not getting the best and the brightest, we're really not getting that diversity of thought and information that could actually help us to be a better society, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment by Counselor Perks. Favor carried. Item is amended. Recorded.
Counselor Ainsley, when you're seated. Counselor Kerr, Janus? Oh. Counselor Holliday?
Carrie's unanimously, 21 in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher, on page 10, your two items. I believe that you're ready?
Yes, I am, Speaker. And after some fantastic work by the chief planner, I'm just ready to release both of those. He's provided a letter to--
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on page 10, T 8.12, Counselor Fletcher is releasing. On favor?
Recorded.
Recorded.
Counselor Perutza, please. The item is adopted unanimously, 21 in favor.
On page 10, T 8.13, recorded vote. So we're moving-- Counselor Fletcher, we're moving the supplementary report?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Recorded vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item is amended.
Pardon? Item is amended. On favor? Carried. Okay, before we recess, do any members of council want to release any items? Counselor Carroll?
Yes, thank you. I've spoken to the local councillor. At the top of page eight, EY 8.1, I can release that.
Okay, on page eight, EY 8.1. It's been all in favor. Counselor McKelvey?
Madam Speaker, I can release CA 9.3 with a recorded vote.
What page? I'm sorry.
It's on page five.
CA 9.3, you would like a recorded vote?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Yes, madam speaker.
On page 5, CA 9.3, recorded vote?
Councillor Wong-Tam, please. Councillor Perutzha, please. The item is adopted unanimously, 20 in favor.
Councillor Bradford?
Thanks very much, madam speaker. Page 11, TE 8.63, I have a minor amendment with the clerks, so I can release.
Does the staff have your amendment?
Yep.
Okay, if we can put the amendment on the screen, that's on page 11, TA 8.63. Okay, the amendment's on the screen. On favor? Carried.
Recorded vote on the item?
Recorded vote?
On the item. It's going to be a PXO. We approved both things, and it can't be...
Okay, recorded vote on the item.
It's going to be a light.
No, it's...
Crosswalk, yeah. It's a crosswalk, yeah, because of the transit.
I took it off.
Councillor Fletcher, please. Councillor Perutzha, please. Councillor Perutzha, your vote, please.
The item is amended, carries 19 to 1.
Okay, do we have any more quick items? Any more?
Okay.
Okay, we'll recess to 2 o'clock.